Notice is hereby given at the regular meeting of the Board of Education in the town of Westfield, in the County of Union, New Jersey, at 5:00 PM on the evening of Tuesday, August 26th, 2025, in Cafeteria B at Westfield High School, 550 Dorian Road, Westfield, New Jersey. The purpose of the meeting is to transact the regular business of the Board and to transact any other business that come probably before the Board. This is to advise the general public, to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The Westfield School Board on Thursday, August 21st, 2025 is to be posted at the Office of the Board of Education, located in 302 Home Street, Westfield, New Jersey, and delivered to the Westfield leader, the Star Ledger, the Westfield Library, the Town Clerk of Westfield, TapIntoWestfield.com, and meeting notice set forth, time, date, and location for this meeting. I have a mobile, please.
Rob Bonaccio.
Here.
Ken Diamond.
Here.
Brendan Galligan.
Here.
Charles Doines.
Here.
Leila Morelli.
Sonal Cal.
Here.
Kristin Seichmelz.
Here.
Julie Steinberg.
Here.
Mary Wiggins.
Here.
Brendan, this is Mr. Duxey.
Blood Legion's Civil Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan on a nation under God, indivisible, with a nakedness to stop.
You do have some announcements there, we'll start apparently.
Oh, yes. Back to school logistics. We're excited to welcome everyone back for the 25-26. Yes, I can use my mic. I thought I was loud enough.
No, we just need to make sure the camera can...
Both give each other.
We're excited to welcome everyone back for the 25-26 school year. Sample winter on Tuesday, September 7th, and the first day of school for students will be Thursday, September 4th. Homeroom and class schedules will be released this week. As previously communicated, please be sure to complete the electronic back-to-school packet in Genesis. Once the packet is submitted, you will be able to access your child's homeroom and your class schedule. We look forward to a great year ahead.
And you all too. This summer, Westfield STEM Camp welcomes students in grades 3 through 8 to explore hands-on challenges designed to spark curiosity and creativity across science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Camp has took part in a wide range of courses from solo boat racing to crash test cars to wind-powered vehicles, crime scene investigation, stop-motion innovation, and workshop to play. Multilingual summer experience, 15 multilingual learners in grades 5 through 5, participating in this year's multilingual summer experience. A two-week enrichment program designed to support English language acquisition through interactive hands-on activities. Held July 7th through the 18th, the Westfield Public School District Program followed the theme Journey to the Stars, guiding students on an exploration of planets and the solar system by blending science learning with literacy and language development. Secondly, the Westfield and Plainfield communities are invited to a special reimagining of the historic Cardinals vs. Blue Devils rivalry game. This year's matchup will be presented as the Dr. Derrick Nelson Service and Sacrifice Show Book, honoring our beloved hometown hero whose life reflected unwavering dedication, leadership, and ultimate sacrifice in service to others. This event will take place on Thursday, August 28th, two days from now, at 6:00 PM at Oakstein Field in Plainfield. Admission is free, the donation of a canned good to benefit local families in need, a reflection of Dr. Nelson's lifelong commitment to service. Tickets are available at www.pan.AUDL.com. We invite the entire community to fill the stands, wear your team colors, and join us in celebrating Dr. Nelson's legacy through a night of spirited competition, unity, and community. Thank you.
Brendan.
For the second year in a row, all six of Westfield Elementary Schools have been awarded Gold Certification in the Safety Rooms Recognition Program. This recognition highlights the district's continued commitment to bike and pedestrian safety, community engagement, and its ongoing partnership with EZIRI to promote safer, healthier, and more accessible service. This achievement reflects the collective effort of our schools, families, and community partners through initiatives such as the Annual Walk to School Event, the Second Grade Pedestrian and Safety Program, the Bike Safety Program for Students. These programs help foster lifelong habits of safety, wellness, and active transportation. Congratulations to all of our school communities for leading the way in creating safer, more equitable schools.
Westfield High School is proud to recognize 250 students who earned a distinction with AP Scholar from the College Board for their outstanding performance and advanced placement exams. Eighty AP Scholars earned a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Fifty-five AP Scholars with honor achieved an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams with scores of three or higher on four or more exams. And 115 AP Scholars with distinction earned an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams with scores of three or higher on five or more exams. These achievements reflect the hard work of Westfield students and the school's commitment to academic excellence.
District administrators and educators look forward to welcoming parents back to school night next month. The back-to-school night schedule is as follows. The elementary schools will be held on Thursdays, September 11th; the intermediate schools on Thursdays, September 18th; the high school on Thursdays, September 25th; and the middle school on Tuesdays, September 30th. Additional information has got to be shared by building principals. The Special Education Parent Advisory Room is also hosting a back-to-school meeting on Tuesdays, September 9th, beginning 7:00 PM at Edison Elementary School. Assistant Superintendent of Special Services and Student Support Services, Dr. Michael Weisman, and Special Education Supervisors Alex Linden and Kathleen Nishewa will join the Special Education Committee in presentation and roundtable discussion of latest updates and events with Special Education Committee.
School Observances. As the new school year begins, we look forward to recognizing and monitoring rich cultural, historical, and religious traditions that reflect the diversity of our school community. On the month of September, we observe Patriot Day on September 11th, National Heritage Month on September 15th, and October 14th, and Wash U Shanti at Sundown on September 22nd through September 24th. Schools will be closed on September 23rd and 25th. Together, we will raise disturbances as opportunities to learn from one another and to deepen our understanding of values, beliefs, and experiences that shape our shared community.
The next regular public meeting of the Board of Education will begin Tuesday, September 16th, in Cafeteria B at Westfield High School, beginning at 5:30 PM. The meeting will be livestreamed via the district YouTube channel, which viewers can access on the Board tab on the district website. The complete agenda will be available on Friday, September 12th. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. That's one. As our community prepares for our local elections in November, including races for mayor and four town council seats, we want to take a moment to clarify the district's position on political activity. While Board members and staff who reside in town are free to support candidates in their personal capacities, the Westfield Public School District and the Board of Education do not endorse any political candidates. We also remind all candidates and campaign teams that school property, events, classes, websites, and data systems may not be used for campaigning purposes. Additionally, parent contact information collected through school systems is strictly for educational communication and may not be used for campaign outreach. The district has clear policies governing political activity and the use of school resources, and we appreciate the community's cooperation in ensuring these expectations are met. Next, we'll go right into... This is a report by the district's administration, but we're starting with a board training. We are happy to be joined by our NJSPA representative, Jeanne Perry. So just for the public certification, the Board of Education is a selected position, a volunteer position, but there are a number of rules, regulations, and just good governance procedures that help the boards run smoothly. We're lucky enough to have a very good board that runs relatively well, but it's always good to get some training to keep us down that path. So we invite Jeanne here to speak. This is a public meeting, obviously, with all of us here, so the public will be in the benefit of this as well. Congratulations. And I just want to turn it over to Jeanne and thank you for taking the time to be here.
Of course, thank you so much. It's really a pleasure to be with all of you tonight, and it's an exciting time with the new schools coming out, and it's interesting to hear all of the wonderful things that are already going on in Westfield. Sorry, I'll do that again. I am happily with you, and I was happy to hear all of the things that are going on already for the exciting preparation for the opening of new schools. So I am pleased to be with you this evening. I was asked to come out and speak to you this evening as part of our training on roles and responsibilities. And I really want to, for the benefit of the public, you know, just go further on what's been said is that, you know, it's really to your credit as a board that you are always looking for continuous improvement in your governance and that you set aside this time, especially at a very busy time of the year with new schools, to have this training. So as we move forward, please let me know if there's anything you, you know, would like to clarify or anything. This is really for you, as the board, so that you can minister to students and help us. So the four functions of the Board of Education, it's important to start there. The four functions are policy, planning, appraisal, and ensuring two-way communication. So through the policy, and we're going to take a little bit deeper look at policy as we go through this presentation, but your policies actually have used to be as a board and set the tone for guiding the district in how it operates to serve students from Westfield. Your plan was for program and quality instruction to advance student achievement. And really, that's what we're all here for. We call this a position we hold. We should all come together and recognize that that's what we're really doing, right? We're trying to serve student achievement. Your appraisal function as a board is important because that's how you ensure the effective management of the school district, mainly through the evaluation of the superintendent holds the authority to run day-to-day operations. And it's how you ensure, and through your governance oversight, that the district is being well run. And finally, you are tasked with providing and ensuring that there's two-way communication between all stakeholders. Now that, I want to caution, does not mean that board members should be independently speaking, right? We recognize that the superintendent is, the authority is given for the district, and the board president is given for the board. But your role is to ensure that the district has proper channels of communication so that we can keep the community engaged in the important work you're doing here. We recognize that it's important to have strong schools to sustain strong communities, and likewise, strong communities help sustain strong schools. So just a quick touch on who does what in public education. So the New Jersey Constitution grants the legislature the power to govern schools, and the legislature has given authority to the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education has granted authority to boards of education throughout the state of New Jersey to govern local, holding responsible for ensuring that very compliance, of course, with federal and state requirements, to bring the best education possible for students and to stay focused on our student achievement. Important factors that, and you know this from our clear past staff training, is that you, as board members, are college school officials, and you are bound by the code of ethics. The purpose of which is to really maintain public confidence and trust in the work that you're doing for your governance to ensure strong public schools focus on student achievement. So the way the board needs to operate is through having a legally constituted meeting, which we did, we announced that at the opening of this meeting, and that you have a forum, doesn't, right? Now, we're meeting in public as a business meeting in public for the benefit of the community to have a deeper understanding of why decisions are being made to support students. So on this slide, it's a really important slide that really breaks down the difference between the goals that you fly. So your board team is constituted of board members, and your superintendent is a non-changing member of the board, right? Now, when we look at this slide, it basically is reminding us that board members really are charged with bringing the block. What do we want to see? What direction do we want the district to go in? What policies do we need to have in place that provide that guidance for the running of the district? And what oversight? And how are we going to fulfill our obligation of board members towards oversight? The administration is actually tasked with the day-to-day operations, which is seen, of course, by your superintendent, Dr. Gonzalez, to provide supervision on an ongoing basis for staff and accountability for everything that is happening in the district. So when we look across the top of this slide and we break it up by category, this slide really helps us to see where the authority rests and how it's, it's similar, but not the same, right? So for planning, long-range strategic vision planning, and I know that you, as a, as a board, have conducted your strategic plan and are in the process of fulfilling that strategic plan. So the board needs to be aware of critical issues that affect the district, the schools, and students, incorporating a vision that Westfield holds for its students in the planning that's being done, making sure that all the goals, on this multiple levels, multi-year, there's the strategic planning goals, annual district goals, the local ones, home goals, are all aligned to really be working together efficiently to serve students. And under planning, for the administration, the focus is going to be a bit different. The focus is going to be on, you know, working with the educational information, knowing where students are at, where the needs are, all of the educational planning, understanding and operating within accepted best practices on a daily basis, allocating key sources, providing training and evaluation of staff.
Sure that all of the goals on those multiple levels, multi-year strategic planning goals, annual district goals, the board's own goals, are all aligned to really be working together efficiently to serve students. Now, under planning for the administration, the focus is going to be a bit different. The focus is going to be on, you know, working with the educational information, knowing where students are at, where the needs are, all of the educational planning, understanding and operating within accepted best practices on a daily basis, allocating resources, providing training and evaluation of staff, and then, of course, reporting it out to both the board and the community, right? Because we all want to be engaged in how we are succeeding in meeting the needs and aspirations for the students. For programs, the role of the board is to really set those standards and expectations through, of course, your policies, which will speak to that and provide that guidance. Have policies that ensure that you're demanding equity so that people are treated fairly and understand the rules that are applying and how to fully meet that. Fund the resources and development that's necessary. So one of the important roles of the board is to ensure that the budget reflects the programs and instruction that you want to bring and the opportunities that you want to bring, right? So we can have planning, but it's not going to be successful unless we match it up with a budget that's going to support that for students. And when we look at the administration and their role in program, it's going to be really matching programs with New Jersey student learning standards and making sure that everything is in compliance, looking at curriculum, cycle, scope, and sequence to ensure that the curriculum is evaluated on an ongoing basis, to make sure that any updates that have to be provided, and to ensure that it's really providing, you know, those, that mirror and windows for our students so that they see themselves, they see the world, and they see themselves in, in that as well. They will make decisions about what technology is appropriate at different levels of, you know, schooling, and balance and ensure that there's equitable service so that students, regardless in which building they're sitting in, at the same grade level, would have access to those resources fairly. For personnel, an important area of focus for the board is to ensure that you have the proper policies that speak to the expectations for hiring and sustaining staff, retaining staff. You also want to ensure that there's equity in the hiring process, that there, that you, as a board, under personnel, will, some of you at least, participate in negotiations at times, and that you are really charged with ensuring the recognition of both staff and students. Because recognizing staff is, is an important key component, right? We want to make sure that we're appreciating and showing that everyone is focused together on student achievement and we're recognizing the efforts of those closest to our students. For the role of the administration under personnel, they're handling, of course, the actual hiring process, and I believe we have our Director of HR here. So we leave it in the capable hands of the administration to ensure that they're handling the interview process, making recommendations to the board. They're looking at staff assignments. We recognize that staff works for the district and not individual buildings. Staff development programs, supervision and evaluation of staff, they're handling those administrative day-to-day processes, right? Whereas the board is staying at that higher level that keeps you informed, sets policies on what the expectations are, and lets you evaluate appropriately, but leaving the day-to-day in the hands of administration. For finance, it's important that the board has, again, policies that speak to what that process of the budget development is going to look like, ensuring that the community is being kept informed of that process, but leaving the actual construction of the budget to the administrative team, right? But just ensuring from a board level that that budget is going to meet the needs of providing for the plans that we have for the students. Facilities, again, the board needs to be really aware and ensure that there's money set aside for the maintenance of your facilities. I was in a board training like this recently, and a member of that board said, you know, "We recognize that we're supposed to stay focused on student achievement, but, you know, sometimes we have to talk about boilers and roofs and the asphalt." And I said, "That's absolutely true, but what the board always needs to remember is how does that conversation serve students to create and maintain the safe environments that you need to really be able to deliver the education and the opportunities for learning that you want for your students," right? So we tie it into how that really serves our students. The day-to-day facility management, coordinating on projects, if there are project managers, managing the facility staff, all administrative functions that are with the administration. And communication, finally, is that the board has to recognize that its responsibility, again, is not to speak for the district or for the board, but to ensure that there are proper avenues of communication in place, that information is updated regularly on your website and any other tools that you're using to get that information out, that supports maintaining engagement with the community. And if you have to provide funds to support that work that will be handled by administration, then you need to match it up with that goal, okay? So this is a really important slide to just refer to. Sometimes we have, you know, unintentionally, we may step out of this grid and into the other area, and that can be really detrimental to slowing things down when people need to be really good at what they do. The board needs to be really good at what it does, and the administration needs to be really good at what it does under the authority granted. So when we look at the board members, you are policymakers, visionaries, and communicators, and your policies provide for the guidance for how the district will run, especially to the superintendent, right? Your intentions are clear, we take away ambiguity, we're all understanding what the expectations are, and it helps the superintendent to actually run day-to-day operations because the staff also knows what's expected and why it's expected and how those expectations are going to help you fulfill your goals for your students. You're asked, as board members, to be visionaries, right? You know, have those aspirational goals, recognizing where you are now, what is going really well. Many, many things are going really well in Westfield. What your challenges are, and what's the plan for addressing those while maintaining that focus on the mission that you have and the vision for your students. And as communicators, ensuring just that the community is constantly being kept engaged in the good work that's happening and hearing about the challenges and what the plans are for meeting those challenges so that everyone is going in the same direction to really support Westfield's students. And, and we recognize that during the year, challenging issues may come up, but we have to see in each other a commitment that we may disagree on an issue, but we can all, all see in each other that we're really here to serve students and try to work through consensus to maintain that. So the superintendent's role of a district is actually threefold. As chief advisor to the board, you really benefit from having your superintendent on your board as your advisor, who you should be comfortable to go to and get guidance from. And he will proactively give that guidance because of the role he holds, the experience he has, and the expectations of his position professionally. He is the staff liaison to the board from staff, excuse me. He'll provide those briefings on things that require board action or attention. So from, everything from what may be, what he may be hearing from staff is going on in the buildings, that we don't have a policies that, that really addresses appropriately anymore. Perhaps there is silence on that issue and you need a new policy for something to help the, the staff guide everyone forward and keep things running smoothly. He'll also keep you informed of those things that you need to know about district operations as well as other things that you may want to be aware of that are on the horizon, that may at some point be impacting Westfield. As the chief executive officer, he's running those day-to-day operations. He is ensuring that he's providing progress updates and keeping you informed of any emergent issues that come up. He's also accountable to the board for the efficient running of the district and also directing staff members and evaluating staff members and holding people accountable for what they are in charge of. And of course, the superintendent is the educational leader of the community and can be relied on to work with the board to inform you, update you, whether it's, you know, through a professional organization that he may participate in, like we're hearing good things about some new program that's out there, that's something that we, we may want to consider for Westfield here, just keeping you informed so that you can work together and move forward. So to be most effective, it's really important that the board remembers its role as a governing body and a community representative and recognizing the authority of the superintendent as the chief administrator, administrative officer, excuse me, and educational leader. Now, in this, this is a picture, and I'm a real visual person, right? So we have those arrows pointing together. The arrows are pointing together because what we're saying is working together to advance student achievement. What we don't have is this, right? We don't want to have this coming together. We don't want to be at odds. We want to recognize that we're part of the same team trying to meet the same goals for our students. And so we want to really commit to working effectively together, removing distractions so that we can be really efficient in how we, we serve students. So one of the basic things, I think, in all relationships, not only in board relationships, are the rule of no surprises. No one likes to be caught off-guard and unprepared, especially in a public setting, right? It can also undermine the, the confidence that you need to have in each other as a team, right? That trust that you need to have in each other, that you're keeping each other informed, you're not trying to make anyone look foolish. We all come with our own strengths and areas of challenge, things we have to learn, and that's fine. That's what we, you know, ask our teaching staff to deal with students in a classroom, right? People can be at different levels, but everyone can be successful when we work together. And no surprises because it really undermines also the confidence that the community has. You have a deeper understanding of how some things have to be addressed and why they have to be addressed and what's under statute or requirement of you, knowledge that your community may not have a clear understanding. community may not have a clear understanding of, right? So we don't want to lose their faith in the work that we're doing because it's so crucial to get that and maintain that community support so that the district can focus on moving forward. Staying in your lane is not just a phrase or a good idea, although it is, it's also a requirement, right? So under the Open Public Meetings Act, it addresses the fact that board members are here to serve all students and believe that all students can learn and to recognize that the board as a body has that authority. So looking back at the slide from earlier, how that authority comes through the state constitution to the legislature, the Department of Education granted to local boards. As individuals, we don't have any authority to act, and when we do, that can be really a way that undermines quickly confidence in what the board is trying to do and what is happening for students. So roles and responsibilities, just remembering that, and I know that this is probably a refresher, so thanks so much for your attention because I know this isn't probably the first time any of you have heard this, but it's important. Important things need to be, we need to, you know, revisit them at times. So just remembering that we're not permitted as individuals to either make decisions, take action, or speak for the board. But not just not to do that, but not to be seen, as the Ethics Act addresses, not to be seen by the public, a reasonable member of the public that we are, right? So we have to really think about when we take action, when we speak, are we leaving a reasonable member of the community to believe that because we have information, because we sit on the board, that we're speaking for the board? Might not have been your intent, but we want to be really careful about that. So it's also important to recognize that individual members of the board are really not authorized to direct any staff, including the superintendent. The board directs and guides the superintendent and holds the superintendent accountable. So what does that really look like in your operations and your governance? You know, being really clear about the process that you put in place for how you perhaps request information and data, how you make requests coming out of committee, you know, just understanding whatever your accepted process is in place, it may look different at another district, that you're really being faithful to that process. It's not appropriate for individual board members to request information from the superintendent or another staff member. It really should have the full support of a majority of the board, right? To ensure that we're spending time where that time needs to be spent. If that report is really considered to be valuable information for the board to be able to make good decisions and support a recommendation, then certainly it should happen. But we don't want individual board members taking that time away from what administration should be focusing on. So acting with a majority, you recognize that as a board of nine, your majority is five, and you could simply move forward with thinking, "Well, as long as I have five people, I'm good, we can make decisions." We recognize that in truth, nothing gets done without a majority, but a deeper commitment to make is really committing to trying to work in an environment where we're building consensus, right? Where we're listening to each other for understanding, not so much to think, "Why I don't agree with what that person is saying who's holding a different position," but rather, "Why does that person feel differently than me?" Right? Why are they arriving at a really different place? And what do we need to address about that as a majority when we're making decisions to try to be a little bit more inclusive where that's possible? And then also to have that environment where if you're, we always tell board members, right, "It's your responsibility to be persuasive, be informed and be persuasive." So if you can carry the majority, you do. And if you don't carry the majority and you're in the minority, but you're in an environment where you feel that you've been heard and considered, then you should look to act with the majority, right? And you should not be sending the message to the community that, "Well, they made that decision and I didn't support it." Because really, everyone is here to serve students, and the way the board does that efficiently is to make decisions and hopefully bring people along. But when we're not holding that position of the majority as a minority, if we can feel respected and heard and considered, then we should send the message that we're supporting the work of the board. We're a team, right? So if you play on a team, you know that we would not accept for any of your Westfield students to come off a field or a court and say, "Well, we could have won that game if quarterback made better plays," or "The running back around faster," or, it's really the work of the team. It wouldn't be acceptable to single anything out, right? The success of this board is going to be on how well it moves forward together. Find that common ground, commit to recognizing that good people who want to serve students can hold different opinions at times, and that's okay. But we want to not get caught up in the disagreement, but on the action that will really best serve students. Always being respectful, what we would hold students in this district to, holding ourselves accountable to that. So the code of ethics is here, it's really tiny print from where I'm standing, and the purpose is not to really give you an ethics training again tonight, but just to really remember that the code of ethics exists through the Ethics Act to retain the public trust. And the trust that you have as a board in each other, in the responsibilities and roles that you have to serve students. So making it work in real practical sense, one of the things we really need board members to be comfortable with and commit to is understanding the importance of the chain of command, right? When we know that we can't speak for administration, what we need to do is, when approached, and we are, I'm a former board member myself, you know, you are approached by community members because they're seeking, you know, resolution to an issue of concern that they have. And there's nothing wrong in that, but what is right is for you to explain and educate people that it's really against your authority to engage in that and that they really need to be directed to the appropriate person on the chain of command closest to the issue that they're happening. So if it's a teacher, if they say, "I've done that," the next person may be the principal or an administrator in your chain of command. Letting the superintendent know that you had that interaction so he can make the administrative decision to follow up on that however he sees fit, running day-to-day operations. We recognize that, you know, we don't want to seem cold to our community when we're approached. You're on this board because you care about your community, you care about students in this district, but it's fine to care, but it's important to educate people that it's really against why you're here to serve and it can actually be a violation of the code of ethics. So we can ensure through proper governance that the public has access to the workings of the district through your public meetings, through other things that you do, through communication coming through the district. But remembering that it's not your job to run the district's well, it's your job to make sure that the district is well-run. So any issue that, we call it, it's a fancy way of saying, but administrative solution, if there's a failure of an administrative solution, if the solution is not accepted by both parties between, say, a parent and the teacher, up to the principal, up to whoever, up to the superintendent, right? Only then does it come before the board, and the board as a team, as a whole, will hear that and decide on it if it gets to that point. But just warning any member that if you've had any engagement on any issue, you would at that point have to recuse yourself and not participate in discussions or a vote on a resolution if it should reach the board. And that's something that you may need to share with your community as well so that they understand the reason why you're directing them to someone else and not engaging in that conversation. Referring to the chain of command does a couple of things. It allows the issue to be handled in the most expedient manner. It also ensures that if that issue comes up again, that administrative solution can be applied, so we kind of ensure that there's equity and we're not just making different solutions for different people, but there is some kind of carryover in equity to the extent possible, right? We want to ensure that as board members, if we're out in our community or in our schools participating in something, that we're keeping board business here at the board table, that we're not soliciting for feedback and saying, "Well, what do you think about this?" or "Have you heard about that?" Or, right? We want to stay above that because we want to be seen as neutral parties, which you need to be to govern properly, for those issues that come before you, okay? And again, you know, no surprises, notify the superintendent if something comes to your attention so that, and then leave it with him as the administrator in charge, and we don't follow up, right? Because he doesn't work for individual members of the board and a lot of times confidentiality is involved and he needs to maintain that, but leave it in his capable hands. Communication tips for board members as you fill your responsibilities are just remembering that, of course, the superintendent is in charge of day-to-day operation, has that authority. You as a board have significant authority and responsibility towards oversight. So you want to stay focused on how you do what you do as a good board team. Know your board's communication protocols, right? Internally, as a board, you know, if I have a question on something on my board packet or something that's going to be discussed at the board meeting, how do I get the answer that I need so I'm best prepared for the board meeting, right? Understanding while we really hold a value of transparency with our community, there are appropriate times to keep things confidential, right? Confidentiality is really important, so if you're working in a committee and you are, the committee chair is sharing with the rest of the board appropriately the information so everyone's prepared, it's not the time for any board member to bring that into discussion in a public meeting unless it's on the agenda, unless there's going to be a recommendation and a vote, then that's the appropriate time for that to be discussed in public, right? We don't want to undermine the work of the committee or of the district with putting things out that can be confusing to the public before they're really in a place that we have a plan, right? That we agree on, that this is what we want to do and this is how it's going to serve our students. If you're getting emails, you know, I'm not sure if you use Board Docs, probably Board Docs, or, no, you don't use Board Docs. So if your board packets are coming through email, just remembering, or anything else that may be coming out, never to respond all, and being aware that blind copying is problematic. So the data could be tied to, and it still can be in violation of Open Publics Meetings Act, so just be aware. So as I said earlier, right, a big component of your role and responsibility is towards policy. So I'm just going to take some time now to really look at that in a little detail. Of course, the code of ethics under C talks about this, the roles of the board as policymakers, planners, and appraisers, and goes on to say that you'll frame policies after consideration of hearing from those who'll be affected by them, right? So we do this in a very structured, process-oriented way. Policy adoption is one of the main responsibilities of the board, and it establishes the direction and structure of how the district is operating. There are four types of policies, just to be familiar with. I understand you have a policy committee, right? Okay. So sometimes what I've experienced is that when board members aren't on that policy committee, they're really kind of like, "Thanks for the update," but not really aware of, "Really, this is how the board governs. This is a crucial part that everyone should be comfortable with." Now, with that being said, we have committees for a reason. We put committees together and we trust that they are going to be meeting the goal of that committee and then reporting back to the full board, so everyone gets the information they need to be prepared for the meeting. But policies are really the way the board is communicating about how the district should function, so we should all be comfortable whether or not we're on that committee. There are mandated policies that are required under federal and state statutes. There are monitored policies that are in place that are monitored, such as nepotism, right? We know there are rules against the board, hiring family members or family members of the superintendent, right? Those things we have to be in compliance with, we have to have process in place and policies that speak to that. Critical for other reasons. Now, this is one that New Jersey School Boards has tons of information going out all the time and is on our website, right? We try to keep boards informed of recent legal decisions that may impact you. You would want to be aware. So it may not be a mandated policy, but it's something that you can guide your future decision-making on to ensure, now there's a precedent out there, right? If we do something similar, we're going to be held to that precedent, so that should inform your decision-making. And discretionary are those things that you as a board feel will serve locally your students here, right? That you have control over, you see a need for it that helps things run efficiently day-to-day. This slide really goes to why you need to care about the process and the policies themselves, right? So from when I, the feedback I've gotten is that, and looking at your self-evaluation, there are high marks for your committee structure, and that's wonderful. And one of the things that what we want to really understand is the connection, if you as a board recognize you are here to ensure the proper functioning of the district to support student achievement, your policies listed here really go to that. So you should be comfortable with them and what direction those are leading people in because these policies in academic standards and assessment, curriculum, of course, instruction, learning climate, right? How people feel, how you address safety and security issues, facility issues to support the delivery of instruction, all of those things. The educational program, professional standards, what are our expectations of who's working with our students, how we evaluate, right? How we provide ongoing professional development to ensure that our staff is well-suited and prepared to be successful. We want to be supporting them. And importantly, at the top, you see board governance and planning, your own bylaws that speak to how you govern, right? And what you do, how you share, you know, your focus for strategic planning and tying those annual goals into those goals. We don't want to have so many goals that are distracting to everyone. The purpose of goal-setting is really to ensure that they cascade, right? Your multi-year goals set you on a path of what those district goals from the district should be, what your board goals should be annually towards both supporting district goals and your own growth and development in your governance. So these policies are really important and touch on so many categories that really show why the board is really a policymaking body and helps you to then appraise and hold the superintendent accountable and directs him in how to evaluate and hold staff accountable to meet those aspirational goals. So there should be, and I believe you have that in place, your ongoing review process. And also, as I mentioned earlier, one of the roles of the superintendent is to be your advisor. So if something comes to his attention, he can advise the board, like, "We may need to look at this policy." He may get feedback from staff that says, "This policy is really not supporting the needs of what we need to do now. It needs to be looked at and perhaps updated." Or perhaps staff comes to the superintendent and says, "There's no policy, we're silent on this, but this is something we're really having a difficult time with addressing," right? And a policy will help to ensure that there's a focus on that and that everyone is treated equitably under it and outlines the expectations for everyone. So key points to remember when you're working with your policy is that it affects the entire school district, right? So in the creation of policies or the review of current policies, you want to engage with your administrative team to ensure that if it's a policy that would affect their area of expertise, that they can weigh in and provide some guidance so that we have really sound policies in place that are workable. We also want to ensure that we have good process in place, like first and second reading publicly to get feedback and listen to the community so that we're confident that we're considering the implications of setting that policy. Policies help to clarify roles and responsibilities for board administration and staff. As I said earlier, I was a board member, but I was also an administrator, and I know that when the administrative team meets, knowing when something pops up and we're not really sure how to go forward, the first thing we do is look at the policies. we're not really sure how to go forward, the first thing we do is look at the policies for some guidance to see what would be appropriate for us to go, how to go forward. It allows the board and the superintendent to really optimize the efficiency of discussing and investigating things and moving forward in making decisions to really have clear actions and making clear progress towards meeting goals for students. And it helps the board to retain that perspective of being a macro manager, not a micro manager, right? We want to have that trust on the team between the board and the superintendent to be supporting what he needs to be in that position of authority, holding him accountable, but also having those clear goals set so that you evaluate him on at the end of the year, getting those progress updates, right? The success for your students is going to be, and really research shows that well-governed boards, which I believe you are, that really stay focused on their role and responsibility, being informed on topics, working within the authority, working well together, and reducing the amount of distractions that pull us off, especially in these challenging times. Really, you know, back to the Iowa Lighthouse study, show that student outcomes are best in boards that govern well. Okay? So every policy you make and approve and action you take needs to always be focused and based on meeting the needs of what's the best for all students of the district and recognizing that different students come with different needs and all needs need to be supported. We have to always believe that all students can learn and it's our responsibility to ensure that we put that in place for their success. So that is really the presentation for roles and responsibilities. Do any of you have any questions or want to go over anything that you saw here?
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you. That was really helpful. And if it's possible to get a copy of it for reference, that would be terrific. I didn't see it in the portal, but I would love to get a copy of it. It's not right now. Or at least I don't see it in there, so maybe I'm not using the. Oh, I was just in it and I couldn't find it, but that might be me, but let's not focus on that. I'll work on it afterwards. So could you, just going into the policy side of things, and just given your experience both as a board member and now in the role that you'd had, I would love to hear maybe some pragmatic suggestions on how we can get to that macro level, both those who are on, say, the policy committee and those of us who are not on the policy committee, on how we could collaborate successfully to make sure that, you know, feedback is given and received and what are maybe some best practices and if you have any documents or any, you know, or any processes or, you know, internal controls or procedures that you think are helpful, that might be something useful?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to it just a little bit generally here, not knowing specifically how you're currently running, to be fair. But one of the things, my background is in operations and project planning, right? So I'm a process-driven person. I like to know that there are clear processes in place that everyone is aware of and follows with fidelity, right? So the committee meets and is looking at certain things. The chair of the committee is doing the report and sharing it. There should be a process for all board members to understand how to communicate if they need clarifying information. Now, you're working in committees, though, for a reason, right? Because committees that are really well-run maximize the effectiveness of being able to have different groups of board members dealing through different committees on different things. So it's not the intent for every board member, you're not acting as a committee of the whole, right? But with that being said, good, strong processes that people understand can really bring efficiency and really develop trust because people do understand the pathway to that. So if a board member who's not on the committee feels that there's something that comes up, there should be a clear process of how do we ask through the board president or through the superintendent? It can differ, you know? How do we get something in front of that committee to be dealing with? And it shouldn't just be the policy committee, right? It should be similar for any other committee so that there's an established process of like, okay, I'm not on the finance committee, but these are some concerns. Is that something? Now, it may be something that gets answered by the business administrator and doesn't really need the committee to review, but it might be something that, you know, there's a sense from the board president that the majority interests, that this is really something that maybe they should be looking at and giving back through a committee report so we're all informed on that, right? So that, what does that do? That really gives support to the individual committees that are running so that they can stay effective, but it also prevents, you know, people trying to do too much and resorting to, like, we're calling ourselves a committee structure, but we're really operating as a committee of the whole. And, you know, I'm not here to say that that's a bad thing, but you've made the decision as a board to operate in a committee structure. So you really want it to be successful, right? And efficient. So you want to really make sure that those processes are in place about, well, I have this concern, I'm not on the board, going to the appropriate authority to say, how will that get perhaps on their agenda? And then they'll report back on it. Is that helpful? Thank you.
So you mentioned the term committee as a whole. And I think one of the, we do have certain systems in place where board members can see what happened within the committees, but it is also that it's always the gray area that trips you up, right? So if it's something simple that flows easily and that, you know, you can wait for or whatever it is, that that's easy to put into committee. The harder stuff is stuff where you're almost more soliciting group feedback on something, right? We all see something happens, right? There's a committee that's going to deal with it, you know, at some point in time. But how do we get with the communication restrictions that we have without turning a conversation to a public meeting? How do we make sure that's all getting to the right flow? And we've talked about using committee of the whole as a way, but I'm wondering if there's some, even some best practices on that, whether it's through NJ SBA to kind of get that middle ground in, you know, the better way to collect feedback, maybe more as a group and get it there.
I could probably get some supporting information out to you that would be recommendations for how to do that. I think that, again, it really is a process, right? If individual board members have a concern about something, how you would do it. And it might be at a public, it might be something that gets raised at a board meeting to say, we have a, we have a majority of the board members who feel that this is a concern and we're directing it to this committee to get back to us next month or whatever you deem is appropriate so that even the public knows that the board is addressing it through the proper way that you are organized to look at it. Is that helpful? Okay. Anyone else? And you're right, the devil is in the details, right? It's, it's important to, I would just like to say this, is that, you know, these presentations, I hope I never come off pointing fingers, right? I recognize the challenge that you have to operate and be efficient, especially when other things come up that are affecting the community or concerns. We want to be responsive to that, but always really remembering that we have to at times take that step back and really with fidelity, go through our chain of command, go through our committee structure, have the process in place so that it can be broached at the board meeting. That's not time for the discussion, right? Prior to assigning it to committee. We want to let the committee that's appropriate do that and send the feedback. The other port of that, I would like to say, is also another process that's really important is, you know, of course, and it sounds like you do this in appropriate time to prepare the rest of the board for whatever that committee report is, but if a board member has a question on something, just to understand it better. We really want to hold that the board meeting is a business meeting in public, but it's not a business meeting with the public. We want to be respectful of time and not waste energy for all of you because we have a lot to be doing. So we want to make sure that questions that can be answered to clarify so you understand it better so that when you come into this room, you really feel informed to have, if there's a discussion necessary, an informed discussion. But just, you know, I need to clarify, I don't really understand this, can you give me, you know, point me in the direction of resources? There should be a clear way to find that out so that you really come into this room prepared to have an informed discussion that your public can hear before any decisions are made. Yes, thanks.
So just building on that, how do you balance the need for the board to be efficient with our time and making it look like we know what we're doing and the public's desire to understand how the sausage is made? We don't want to look like we're just coming in and rubber-stamping things that have been discussed behind closed doors, but also we don't, not everything needs to be deliberated ad nauseam in public.
That's right. But giving updates about, you know, that this was looked at in committee and to the extent appropriate to share maybe what happened, sometimes per policy, right? The work of the committee is to do a cyclical review and always be looking at policies on an ongoing basis. So you may not need to report out, you know, and read every policy where it might be more efficient to say, we looked at these policies, they're, you know, they're okay, or this policy needs to be updated because, and then that, sharing that way, right? But I think that, you know, one of the things you said is interesting, actually, that we often hear from boards that are governing well, honestly, that the community will say, you guys just rubber-stamped everything, right? Because there's a lack of understanding from the community at times that the work has been done before you got here, right? You've been informed, you've read your committee reports, you've worked on your committees, you've participated and worked with your staff liaisons on those committees, you know, all of the things that have happened to get you to the point that you come into a public board meeting that's efficient. So there is a line with explaining that first and foremost to the community, that you're not just going along, that these things have been appropriately addressed in the proper format and that here's what the public needs to know. We're making, you know, this vote is about this, we have the discussion we need to have and we're making the decision, but we've also addressed this in committee before or whatever it is. Just to send that message out, they have a right to understand that, right? You're having a business meeting in public, but not everyone in the community is privy to how, how it works, right? So we want to always be educating people to that.
Right. And we don't want to have a performative debate just to satisfy something.
Exactly right.
Especially when something's controversial.
That's right. You really, you want to be as efficient as possible so that the work of the district can move forward in serving its students.
Good point.
Thank you for all that information. It was really helpful. And I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a board handbook that mimics this that kind of helps us go through, you know, what to do and when and follows the chain of command. So it's very helpful for us and just a reminder to everybody that we have that up there.
Yes, thank you. As a matter of fact, the next thing we're going to go on to is the review of the board's self-evaluation. And I learned that through that because it was mentioned the number of times. I was so happy to hear that. Not enough boards have their handbook that gets updated and reviewed regularly. It's an amazing thing that you're doing. So thanks for bringing it up because yes.
Okay, then I won't say anything else.
No, no, no. Feel free. I didn't mean to.
That was all I wanted to say.
Not at all. I think that absolutely, I had forgotten it, but thank you for tying that in. So when board members have questions, they have that available information, right? About how to go about doing some of the things that you're asked to do.
I was actually going to say the same thing Sonal said, was that, you know, we have the board portal that has all the committee, all the committee notes put on there for all the other board members to see. And then if there's questions or discussion needed, then it's, the board handbook then tells you who to go to if you have.
Oh, excellent.
If you're not on that committee, how to get in touch and ask questions.
That is great to hear. And that is one of those things that you want to really, you know, share with your community, that you have that because that's a wonderful thing that you have put in place and a process that you're following. So, you know, you're, you're doing a lot of the right things that you're being asked to do and that's wonderful. So these reviews are just an opportunity to kind of revisit and keep us recommitting, right? Recommitting to the tasks that we have in front of us. Oh, yes. Yeah, exactly. Like, I think you want to, you want to recognize, first of all, that sometimes it's unavoidable, right? That things might come a little closer. But yeah, best practices, we used to say, you know, 48 hours after that committee meeting, that those notes should go out to the rest of the board so that people, we're all busy people, we recognize, right? You're all coming from work, you have family obligations, community obligations, all of the things that you do and you want to be best prepared. It's also important with the committee, do you have your committee calendar meetings set from the beginning of the year? You do, perfect. Because some boards don't do that and you know how hard it is to arrange for nine, 10, 11 people to get together in a room. So when you're setting that calendar as a board and agreeing to it, just factoring in that how many days before a board meeting are we having that meeting so that that chairperson who's writing that report has reasonable time to put that together? I would actually like to redirect this to your president just because maybe on a specific way, you know, I'm not sure that I have all the information of what is happening, so.
Sure. I mean, we generally, we put the, we try to have our committee meetings within at least a week and a half before a board meeting will happen. Sometimes that can work, sometimes it doesn't.
Sure.
There's times you have to have board meetings shifted around a little bit and that sets the schedule pretty askew. But we'll generally try to have the meetings at least, like I said, usually it's a week and a half, sometimes two ideally. The finance committee meetings are a little harder because you're getting financial information almost up to the, up to the day and, you know, and those will usually be on the Friday before a board meeting. But as far as the policy committee and the curriculum committees, we try to get at least a week's lead time before then and then try to get the report out, I think probably 48 hours it generally is. I have to look for every, I don't know if that's every single time, but I think that's just pretty close.
Overall, generally, that's acceptable.
And then there's usually that period in between where folks can start asking questions. Well, you talked about this, what did you talk about? Why did, you know, why did you discuss this? So I think we're generally pretty good on that. It's not to say that there haven't been times where something has come pretty late to all the committee, to each of the committees and you're saying, well, you know, gosh, we got to, we got to act on this sooner than later. I don't think any of us love that, quite frankly, but, but it is what it is. So, I mean, look, there's always room to be a little more solid and a little better with it.
But it sounds like you have a process in place that supports that.
Yeah, just a matter of making sure that process is functioning the way it's supposed to function as frequently as we can possibly make it work.
And there are times, right, that especially with, you know, budget and finance, that, you know, you're going up to the wire. I know that even creating agendas for board meetings, right? Sometimes those things are coming in really minutes. Am I lying? You know, right before you're coming out here and you're trying to update the board and do all of that. It's a frantic time in central office. But recognizing that sometimes there's not one rule that's going to work all the time, right? So you may wind up getting a report that, for whatever reason, is coming in a little late, but it may not really content-wise present a challenge, right? It might be something that's pretty straightforward and you're informed and we're prepared to go forward with it. And other times, if there is a situation where it seems like more time is needed, the board operates through a majority, right? So if the board majority feels like, hey, we just haven't had enough time to really hold this vote right now, understanding what are the impacts if we push this off to the next meeting? And there might be impacts that you're not willing to accept, right? So it's kind of working together to come up with the best scenario, but overall, having an expectation that those meeting committee notes are coming out in proper time. Then when it happens where it goes a little off course, you can address it in the proper I think that that's something that through your bylaws can be addressed and your handbook that you have that kind of supports that. I am very careful about trying to make a statement of this is right and that's wrong, right? Because what I'm Because what I'm more concerned with, um, and try to focus boards on is, if you're recognizing there's an issue with that, what's leading to that? And what do you control that may improve that, right? So assuming that, you know, if some board member is missing a meeting, what's behind it? Is it a conflict with a schedule? Is it that we have to consider holding the meeting at a different time to support everyone being there, you know? So for me, I would be uncomfortable to stand here and say that there's, you know, one right way and one wrong way to do it. I think we always want to be sensitive to what's in front of us and really pull together as a team and analyze it, right? Um, look at, you know, what's happening and try to understand why it's happening, and what's a reasonable response to that, to support all members of the team so everyone can fully, really, um, be playing their part, right? I'm sure that if someone's missing it, it's not intentional, it's just that, you know, it may be something that needs to be addressed to support that person, just the way we would hope that would happen in administration and with staff, correct? So we want to make sure that we're not using a hammer when we can, um, be working together to move forward together in a positive way. And life changes, you know? It might be that someone thought they can meet the obligations of that committee, and it might be a personal situation that they're not comfortable sharing with everyone, but they can go to the board president, and maybe that has to be addressed, right? Okay. All right. So if there are no more things on the roles and responsibilities, um, do you need a break? Or should I move into the board self-evaluation? Just go on? All right. So, um, I, I did leave copies with you. I think you may want to share now, now what has happened, um, just to reflect on where we started, right? So the board, um, should be recognized for agreeing to participate in the board self-evaluation. It is not a requirement under any statute for you to do that. It is a recognized best practice. And it's a recognized best practice because it shows your willingness to engage in your own accountability and continuous improvement for what you do and how you do it, your own governance. So the report that's just been shared is my summary report. So you each individually who participated, um, did it through our portal, and that information was compiled, and it's like 20 pages long. Okay? So what I do is I take them, put together a summary report, and I've included some recommendations that you may find helpful, and they may actually help you on the next part of what we're going to talk about, which is board goal setting. Um, or it just might be something you consider, and you may or may not agree with it. So, um, the, uh, self-evaluation covers the categories that are listed across the top: vision, mission, and goals, policy, student achievement, governance, team relationships, and accountability, resource management and oversight, community leadership. And you all graded yourselves in those, graded the board, I should say, um, in those areas. And the, on a scale of 4-0, um, your overall board governance rating came in at 3.4. So it's showing that you're, um, a strong, strong, good, well-governed board. But like anything, we want to identify those areas that are really working really well, right? Because we hope to, um, duplicate that in other ways. And then we look at the things that we recognize yourselves as a challenge and an opportunity for additional growth. So the, you have it all in front of you, but just going over it, um, the board uses goals to guide initiatives, and the mission statement is the driving force behind communication and meetings. That's a, a plus. So this has been designed with on the left, taking comments, some of them have been put together because, you know, several people made a similar statement. Um, an important one was also that since the adoption in the fall of 2023 of your strategic plan, it has served as clear and consistent roadmap for the district. It's frequently referenced by both administrators and board members as a living document that reflects the aspirations of the community and the collective commitment to continuous improvement. That's the whole reason we do strategic planning, which is to engage our stakeholders and then set plans that are going to support those aspirational goals. The alignment between the strategic plan and the district initiatives has strengthened the focus on student achievement and fostered a shared sense of purpose across all the stakeholder groups. So that is really positive, how you have reflected on your work, um, under, uh, vision, mission, and goals. On the side for, um, opportunities for growth based on some of the comments, is that it may be helpful to add the district mission, vision, and statement, uh, I'm sorry, strategic plan goals to the beginning of the board handbook. Now, I don't have the benefit of seeing that, and know they may be there already, but that was a, was something that was recommended, and you as a board may feel that that's a positive. Some board members, um, are perhaps not fully trained in, in the ways to engage in discussions that focus on the vision, mission, and goals for the district operations and the board's planning, oversight, and policy decisions. So it's recognizing here, and, and several people said something similar, just about how board members communicate, right? And how to stay, um, communicating efficiently and focused on the mission and the work that's, um, being done for students. So a recommendation that I put in is that, um, a board goal of obtaining board certification through New Jersey School Boards could help you in this, to ensure that there are regular updates and training on governance topics that best serve the board. The board would choose those topics, um, and it would be run similar to this evening. Training to clarify the board's roles and responsibilities, which we've covered this evening, this was written before, um, I put together the slideshow for you, and the role in data decision-making. So this board, from other comments throughout, stressed that you do, do want and work with data and making informed decisions, but it seemed like there might be, um, some areas to bring everybody on to the same level of understanding, how to work with data, what that is appropriate, how to request data. So under policy, oh, and I should say, I'm not sure if I did, um, that you had rated yourselves as a, as a team 3.4. Policy came in at 3.3, and it was mentioned that since adopting Strauss Esme, the policy manual and alerts, the board has made significant strides in maintaining an up-to-date and comprehensive policy manual, which is all good news. Um, the committee-based approach to policy allows for collaborative, thoughtful dialogue, particularly when local discretion is permitted. Um, the process supports policies that are reflective of the district's values, priorities, and operational needs. So again, talking about your committee structure, your process that's in place, um, is seen as a strong positive. The board leverages administrative expertise while maintaining its governance role through clearly articulated policy. Um, a grow and a challenge area for this would be, um, I noticed comments in the section for challenge and opportunity that you, um, filled in. And the areas that I thought you might want to focus on are clarifying the process of continuous review of policies. This is not to imply that you're not doing that, but as we heard here today, just, um, ensuring that all board members really have a clear understanding of the policy, how to get something in front of the committee, that type of thing. Identify how the input is received from those affected by policies, right? Um, ensuring that you're having, um, a proper feedback cycle as part of this. And ensuring cyclical, ongoing review and clarity for stakeholders. So it's important to have those policies, but it's also important that those policies are clear. No one should need a legal degree to understand what the policy says, and that, um, the community has access. So of course, your policies should be available up on your website, I believe they are, um, so that people can be directed to them and refer to them. So a recommendation, um, is, and we covered it tonight, uh, training on the board's role in policy. But the training tonight is, again, just the beginning of the conversation, right? So you as a team can continue where appropriate to discuss that and put things into place as far as how you, um, work together. Next is accountability for student achievement, which came in at 3.6. The strategic plan, um, continues to serve as a powerful framework, guiding the district's work and ensuring that student learning remains central to the focus for all students. There's a culture here in Westfield of high expectations, informed decision-making through analysis of student data, and support structures for equitable access to rigorous learning opportunities. This is really, um, something the community should be really proud to hear, that the board is acknowledging that you do really show, um, a commitment to rigor for all students at all levels under the, um, the belief that all students can learn and be successful, right? The strategic use of technology and instructional resources has led to increased personalized learning and academic growth. The board is recognizing that these are all really, um, good things that, uh, you are evaluating on yourselves. So challenge area, an area and opportunity for growth, is remaining focused and unified and supporting the district's instructional goals and student-centered initiatives without the distraction to highlight the importance of academic achievement through work that aligns curriculum, resource allocation, and professional development together. I think what we're seeing here is that this is not a huge negative, it's just a matter of focus and focusing on the board's role in this work, right? And not trying to, um, expect perhaps, uh, those updates perhaps coming too soon, or looking to change lanes too quickly, right? We want to be faithful to the plans we put in place. Strengthening the public messaging to more explicitly celebrate the work will enhance transparency, build community confidence in the work, and modernize what the traditions of excellence means to our district in the modern era. So again, engaging with your community, having your community, um, really understanding the wonderful things that are happening here, and the reasons behind the decisions that you're supporting, right? And the recommendations that you receive. So a recommendation would be to review how to request data as a board, and how to fulfill the board's function of appraisal, right? The, the, I can be guilty of it. I would like information on a lot of things that can be at times distracting to the work that I need to do. It's not really, it's just because I want to know, right? We want to really always have a clear understanding of why we're requesting information and how that information helps us in the governance that we're responsible for. Um, so the next one is, uh, the, the team relationships and accountability. Now, I do want to draw your attention that this one, the board, this is all coming from your, you know, responses. Um, the board has this as your lowest-ranked category, recognizing an openness, quite frankly, to do better in this area, right? So honestly, I applaud you because this is what we're doing a self-evaluation for, to strengthen our weaknesses. So the, um, the good thing that's happening is the annual approval and use of the board handbook exemplifies the shared commitment to clarity in goals, responsibilities, and expectations. I do see that as a really, really strong tool that you have in place and a process in place, um, to hold yourselves accountable. The board's utilization of the committee structure allows for thoughtful, informed discussions and operational efficiency, and information is easily accessible by all board members before board meetings. And I've gotten that feedback from you tonight about there being a portal that you have access to those reports and things that you need. So the challenge areas, um, are how the board, and this is something that we see often, right? We have different people with different backgrounds and perhaps, um, different focus, and we want to continuously work in how we develop an environment of trust that supports your working together, right? Recognizing that people will have different ways of communicating, but ensuring that it's productive communication. So, um, I think that you're, you as a board show that you value respect and commitment. So I think in this section, it's important to look at, um, the feedback more in terms of, you know, how can I, what part do I as an individual play in this, and how to improve that, and how to address appropriately ways forward, to move forward, so that next time we do our board self-evaluation, these challenges are going to, um, be resolved, right? Or on the way to being resolved, because there's nothing in this section that's really, um, too difficult for this board to overcome. It's just an honest reflection on things that you can commit to, to address, to clarify, bring some clarity for people. Maybe not everybody is in the same place, um, and you just want to work on those things together. So a recommendation is the review, to review and update the bylaws, which are your policies about how you govern yourself, right? Your bylaws, and the board norms for communication, including communication from committees, which we spoke about earlier. Um, really just getting, uh, clarity on the responsibilities of board members in the committees, what the responsibility is of the chair of those committees, keeping everyone, uh, on the same page, to be efficient in serving students, and recognizing the importance of confidentiality, right? That doesn't mean to imply that we're holding things back where they appropriately belong with the public, but not sharing before we're in a position to really communicate to your community, um, with one voice, that the board is acting, that the work behind the scenes has happened through the committee structure, um, and just paying special attention to how you interact with each other, right? Assuming, I think one of the most important things for boards, board members to do, is assume, right, as I do when I come into work with any board, that all of you are committed to serving your students. All of you want the best for your students. All of you want to work well together and not, God bless, um, and not be the one that's, um, throwing the wrench in or slowing things down. You all want efficiency, right? But what trips us up is sometimes just our humanness, and we have to, um, just look at the things that we can do, revisiting our code of ethics, not assuming that if there's a problematic behavior, it's intentional. Sometimes people just don't realize the action they're taking might actually be going in the direction of a violation of that code, which would lead to the breakdown of trust, both on the board and with the community. So, um, I think that, you know, there's, there's really nothing major here, it's just in how you go about working towards it and working as a team and staying focused in your unity, which is really what your community expects from you, right? Resource management and oversight came in at 3.6. The passage of the referendum is a positive, and certainly a, a passage of a referendum, congratulations, um, reflects the community's support, um, for you, that things were clearly communicated well, and they understood what you were trying to do and how it was going to serve students. Um, the board facility and finance committees work well with administration, which is a, a key part in, um, you know, resource management and oversight, that there have to be clear expectations and, and good working relationships, and that's in place. The board demonstrates strong, uh, I'm sorry, fiscal oversight and proactive planning. So understanding, you know, that why you have a long-range facility plan, um, what your responsibility is as a board to, uh, get that committee report from finance and facilities so that you can approve the monthly secretary and treasurer's reports, right? Ensuring, not that you're looking at, um, all of the details, but that things balance every month is the most important responsibility of the board, so that there are no surprises in that budget later on. So you identified challenge areas, no surprise, I hear this so often in every district, um, dealing with aging facilities, dealing with changing demographics, right? Do our facilities meet the needs of our changing community? Navigating financial pressures that are associated with our rising costs, right? And having to, um, make decisions, um, in a, in an environment with a little heck of clarity perhaps right now. The recommendation is just really do what you are doing, ensuring focus and alignment of all student-centered goals to remain good financial stewards. And, and part of that just goes on to how you communicate with your public, right? When we want to put something in place, at times, we may have to make a, a hard decision to remove something else, right? Something that's not being subscribed well to, or we may have to make some changes that not everyone will agree with, but there should be thoughtful, um, communication so that the community is assured, uh, of the depth of... so that the community is assured of the depth of, you know, the work that you're doing to try to keep things as least impactful to students as possible. Community leadership came in at 3.3. The board demonstrates a strong commitment to transparency and community engagement. Presentations and discussions at public meetings are effectively reinforced through newsletters and meeting synopses, ensuring that stakeholders who wish to stay informed have meaningful access to relevant information. That is really, under communication, an important function of the board to ensure that's happening, and it is. A challenge area is just remaining vigilant in separating out personal advocacy. You come on the board and you are individuals. You are individuals with different concerns, but recognizing that the board table is not the place for individual advocacy and that we really have to operate as, as a team, serving all students. Keeping the code of ethics at the center of your board governance to maintain that public trust in members as the school officials that you are. Individual member contribution to the board team. This year, you probably noticed that the self-evaluation tool looked different, and there was thoughtful reason for that because you are a team that needs to operate well together. That's the most important part of successful governance. In the past, there was that, how do I think I'm doing? How do I think the board's doing, right? And this year, there was only one section, and I would just say that you may want to go back to that one section and check on yourselves throughout the year because it lists the things that are really going to put you in the right direction, right? Just as a reminder for your own accountability. But it came in at 3.6. What do you consider the board's greatest strengths that you can build from? Is the commitment to being open and transparent. The organization, the team approach, the board handbook, the structure of public meeting agendas, agendas are all seen as positives that are currently in place. There's a strong team of people on the board and an administration working well together, and the committee structure was identified as, as that strength. Areas that may need more focus to work as an effective board team and continue the good work that you're already doing are just, again, we've talked about these before throughout the evening, some tightening up some internal board processes, reviewing and updating the board norms and bylaws. Again, not assuming that that's not happening, but just committing to it, making sure that all board members are aware it's happening. Clarify internal and external expectations for communication, keeping the focus on students, all students and all schools. Remembering your governance role, understanding, as we talked about tonight, your roles and authority, making that commitment to consensus building and not just operating on a majority, recognizing that the majority is a fact of life, but it's, it leads to better outcomes when we really take time to slow down and understand why people may feel differently than we do and making decisions that might better reflect more people. And continuing to build that trust, sticking to your ethics and staying aligned with long-term goals. So, that is the summary report. And I was, I'm not sure if you gave out the action plan template to the board? I recognize that we are approaching seven o'clock. Okay, you can stop me when you need to. So, the board's self-evaluation, and the reason we went over the summary is that whether it's my recommendations or what you see as more importantly, something that you should be focusing on as a team, to become a board goal. Generally, the district goals reflect the plans that are recommended by the superintendent with the input of the board and approved by the board. Those are going to be specifically directed at student achievement, including of all subgroups in great part, and it is what the superintendent is evaluated on at the end of the year, allowing you to perform your role to appraise and make sure the district is well-run. Tonight, we're not talking about that. Tonight, we're talking about board goals. And it's important to recognize that the board cannot set goals outside of the authority of the board, right? So, within the authority of the board, what can you set as three to five goals for this year that will help you improve what you do? Or help you meet a goal area? So, what I've shared with you is the template is blank on one side, and if you look across the top, it just, there's a place for you to fill in what your board goal will be. And then underneath it, what board activities would you need to have to meet the objective of that goal that you set for yourself? And then there's a spot for, you know, who's going to be, who are we going to be working with? The resources, the timelines, and very importantly, the indicators of success. It's important to identify upfront what the action plan is. Otherwise, goals have a tendency to just sit on a table somewhere, right? What really makes them where you're committed to living them is that you set action plans in place that you agree upon. And similar to how the superintendent will give maybe quarterly updates on progress made towards goals, the board president can make those quarterly updates on progress made towards your board goals to hold yourselves accountable and focused on these things that you're going to determine are going to serve you in your governance. On the flip side of what I gave you, for no particular reason, is a sample of what it would look like if we were talking about a board goal of evaluating the superintendent. I recognize you are already doing that. This is just the standard sample that we provide. And it's helpful because it kind of gives you a sample of how they break out the steps to getting to that. This is, this was for a board that really wasn't meeting the requirement of doing that by July 1st annually, right? So, if we look here, based on what we talked about tonight, you may have an idea about a board goal, but if I could be so bold as to share one that I thought, coming from your self-evaluation, you may want to consider, is to determine that the board would like to become a certified board through New Jersey School Boards, right? So, we have, I think this is the certification process. I, I'm sharing with you the certification process, what the board would have to do to be certified. Now, what this would allow you to do is allow you to focus on setting the schedule of goals of, you have four years to obtain 16 training credits as a board, right? So, you could schedule out what that looks like for your board team, how, you know, maybe twice a year, having this type of a training. You could select those topics, which are really agreed upon to really best serve your board in that moment, right? We don't just say that you have to take these, these topics. They really should be meaningful to you as a team. You can submit, as part of it on there, the certification. One of the steps that could be part of your action plan for getting board certified, a requirement, is to submit your contract settlements. The reason we ask for that is because we retain that information so we could share it with you as a resource when you're in negotiations. You have to fulfill performing your board self-evaluation annually, and you want to ensure that there's full compliance for mandatory training for all board members. So, you don't want any of your board team members to fall out of training, compliance for mandatory training. And that would be a sample goal. What that could do for you is ensure that you're setting the path. Now, board certification will not, to be clear, be achieved in one year. Okay, that's not expected. But it's one board goal, and just like district goals at times, maybe multi-year, but what do we expect to accomplish within the first year? And that's where you could set your timeline for, you're going to get two credits this evening, right? For, towards board certification, just by having me out tonight. So, now you're down to completing the remainder of that. And what schedule will you do? How many more will you commit to achieving within this year, right? Now, this would be one board goal that you could carry over to next year and the following year until you meet the full requirements of board certification. What does that do? It helps you actually just focus the work you're already doing on your own governance. It helps you, the research has shown that boards that commit to professional development as a team have better outcomes for students because you're taking the time to work together as a team and support each other. And it also says to your community that we're not just saying that we're staying informed. We're not just telling you to trust us. We're actually working towards it, and you will be recognized at county level. You will have, you know, a, a public recognition of that achievement. So, that's a sample of one goal and how you would break out those steps to achieve it. And indicators of success, again, are really important because what we never want to have happen on goals is that at the end, some people feel we did great on it and some people feel we didn't, right? So, you want to have real, objective indicators of success. We have completed, we agree that we're going to complete this amount of credits by the end of June. You either do or don't, it's objective. You, you are all on the same page, right? We don't want to do anything that's going to invite disagreement. So, that is an example. But I'm not sure from tonight and what the feedback and the conversation, if anyone has another idea for a board goal that you might want to consider. And generally, I would say is that three to five goals a year. Three can be sufficient, right? It depends on what's going to take place. You don't want to overburden what you're doing because then there's a tendency to not really meet your goals. So, we want to really give yourself, you know, as a team, space to really be successful in it.
I love the idea of board certification. That's what I was looking up, so that's why I was laughing. I was laughing because I was looking it up as you were handing it out. So, I apologize for the distraction.
Oh, not at all.
I love that idea. My question for you is, at the New Jersey Teacher, no.
Our workshop.
Convention, several years ago, there was a school boards representative that recommended, I can't remember what district he worked with, but they read as a board, The Governance Core. It's a book, and he worked with them, and it was almost like they did book club.
Yeah, yeah.
And they would break it up, and those were their courses. Is that the kind of thing that's available to earn credits towards the 16? Like, can it be creative like that? Or are you trying to hit very standardized courses?
Yeah, it's, the Governance Core actually can be very helpful to a team to do that. It would be, I would have to look into how we would accomplish that towards credits and get that actually approved, actually from school boards. So, I can get back to you on that. I don't want to give you misinformation here.
Okay, so I can tell you that I purchased it in 2023, which means that it was presented in 2023. It's a good book. And I don't remember who presented it though, but that person has ran book club with two different districts.
Yeah. Okay, so that's a consideration. And again, this is your work, right? Your agreement as a board of what's going to serve, not for me. I was just giving you an example of something I thought may serve you to get you started.
Yeah, I mean, that might be too big of a commitment for the board. I don't know. It's just a suggestion, but I didn't know if it was a suggestion that would work towards the 16 credits. That was the real question. Because I think that's going to be a big time commitment to, to work book club. So, if it doesn't work towards the 16 credits, maybe that's something we off another year.
Yeah, it's something that would have to be. It could be, you could still have it as a board goal if you agree that you all want to commit to doing that. It wouldn't necessarily earn you credits because it would, my time would, for credits to happen, I have to be interacting with the board in a training situation, and I'm not sure that I would be able to fulfill that to meet the requirements from school boards.
Yeah, so if you can just find out, then we'll know if it's an option. It's called the Governance Core. Core? I own it, I can send it around.
Well, Kristin, if we don't add it as a goal, I will meet you for book club.
See, there you go.
But I do think that, I think this is excellent. These are exactly the types of controls we should be working towards as a group, and this is really great structure.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that.
One thing I would say is that I think that, you know, and we could figure this out offline, but we should figure out like a timeline for when we get back to rob with maybe our suggestions and then figure out a way to meet as a group to, to get to yes. But I just want to say, I think this is a terrific structure and set of controls and frameworks. And just thank you very, very much.
Yeah, we really recognize that there's so much expected of the board, right? As individuals and as a team, we're not trying to lay, layer on more responsibility, more time away from your families and your work commitments, right? We want to really use this as a tool to help you efficiently work towards what it is that you're doing.
Just a note to the board. We've made board certification a board goal several times during my tenure, and it is difficult to achieve, not because the, getting training done is hard, but it requires devoting this much time at the start of four board meetings every year for four years. And finding the schedule that allows us to do that, despite having the goal and making progress towards it, we haven't achieved it because of that simple logistical problem of not just our schedule, but our NJSPI rep's schedule.
Yeah, if I could just address that. It's, it's reasonable, I'm not going to say it's not. So, it's four, it's 16 credits achieved over four years. So, it's four credits a year. Tonight, you're, you've achieved two for this year, right? So, if you stay on that kind of schedule, it also doesn't have to be a two-hour commitment. You know, we can be flexible for me coming out and doing this as an hour. Other boards that I work with, so I cover Essex Union and Hudson County, and I can't tell you how different things can look across those counties, okay? And the needs of the board members, as well as the administrators. So, some boards actually find it more helpful to do like special meetings, like a retreat for the purposes of this, and not doing it on the same night as a board meeting because it's a really long night, we recognize. And truthfully, I'm not advocating for just checking boxes, like, okay, we all sat through that for an hour. We really want you to be in a place where you can focus on what it is and interact and work with each other, most importantly. So, it's just another way to present it that, that can be more palatable. I've done retreats for two and three hours, and, you know, on a night that's not a board night. So, it really is what we can adapt to work with you and your board.
Just to clarify my point, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but if we're going to do it, we need to make it a priority of the board and actually devote the time to achieving it.
I totally heard you weren't saying that you shouldn't do it. And, and I think, if anything, I think it supports the template I put in front of you is like, that's really a way to create that board goal and live it, right? So, one of the things we say about board goals, and I mentioned earlier, is for the president of the board to be able to, on a quarterly basis, commit to updating the public at a board meeting, right? Like, this is the progress we've made toward, and not just this goal, whatever your other two or three goals are, right? So that when you do that, the board is remaining focused on the work of the board and what you, you as a team have decided is important for you to be focused on, right?
Hey, Brendan, I didn't know whether or not we were going to pass that referendum, and that seemed like the most like unbelievably impossible thing to do. But if we did that, maybe we could do this.
We can do anything.
Yeah.
And as your field service representative, I believe in you. So, I'm not sure if there are any other possible goals you'd like to discuss or any questions for me, or?
Just clarification on the seven members of a nine-member board. It doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be the consistent same seven members.
So, the goal is, we want nine members for training, right? But the requirement is superintendent has to participate in it as well. But we recognize, like, this evening, I believe you have a board member who's not here tonight, and we don't want to say like, oh, all of this time spent for you, we can't count it, right? We want to really work with you, but we recognize life being what it is, it's complicated. So, it's been established that as long as seven members at a minimum are there, then I'm permitted to give you credit for the training.
In terms of credit accumulation, in the past, there's been requirements from the NJSPI that there be continuity and consistency with who those seven board members are. So, if, if a quorum of the board had changed over, pretty much all the points are lost in the process. Is that still the case?
I just want to give you props for knowing that. So, I, I, thank you so much. It's, it's a great opportunity for me to talk about that. So, that was in, in fact, in place. And what New Jersey School Boards recognized is that it's, it's really difficult to, you know, we have rules, and good rules are ones that you can really hold people accountable to, but if we're just making rules that nobody can really track, there is the expectation that you'll, you won't be able to for forever maintain your board certification, right? Especially with changeover on the board. But we really don't have a way. Some boards are Some boards are stable and may see one person change over in those four years. Other boards may see a lot more change than that. But if there's a commitment to the structure, you could argue that it's more than just the person, it's commitment from the team to be focused on these things. And so they've kind of stepped away from that requirement necessarily. Yeah, trying to make it more doable, but without making it, we don't want it to be like we're handing everybody a trophy, right? We really want it to be a commitment from the board to really be working together on their own governance and us facilitating that for you. But we, we need to make it doable as well.
So how long does a certification last for, for the board?
Yeah, so you maintain the certification. I think it was on there, I have to say they, I have to be careful because they have just recently changed some of the things on there. There's, this is the first level of board certification and you'll hold it. If you go for another 10 credits, there's a higher level of certification. And I'm going to, this is horrible to admit, I'm going to get back to you because it's been something that's been actually under active discussions back at New Jersey School Boards about what that's going to look like. But you do hold it for a couple of years. It's not like it just falls off, you know?
I am sensing some levels of consensus on certification and board goals for, for sure. I think what might be helpful, I, I always like ending on, I believe in you, this is great, like all the good positive stuff. That's a, that's a, that's a good way to wrap it up. And I've always said before even here, especially focused after the referendum, you know, no team is perfect, but you know, we've got a great team. However, we may agree, disagree on whatever it is, we all, I think, have ultimately come together for some great things and that's why we wanted to do this at the beginning of the year, get us re-centered and focused. And now we have a whole nother group of great things to focus on. So what I'm, what I'm going to suggest is, you know, maybe I can speak a little bit later. I have just a couple of other process questions about the easiest possible ways to gather information. You know, I, I think a lot of this would be run through one or at least two committees. And I want to make sure, sometimes it's easier to have the committee create a plan and have everyone look at it. Sometimes it's better, I think, to collect some feedback first and give the committee some clay to work with. And I, my lean is toward that latter point. And one of the things I want to clarify with you is the best way for me to do that while, you know, while ensuring that I'm not, you know, messing up the Open Public Meetings Act in doing so. So I think that's how I, that's sort of my thought process is the best way to collect feedback, but not to wait very long to do that process. I think this is a good, a good start.
You know, not, not having everyone on it, but individually, one-way communication. So if you, as the board president, request that the members of the board send you their thoughts on possible goals, then you can at least collect that information, which might be a good start if you're going to then turn it over to say your governance committee or whatever for further discussions and then they can report back to you.
Oh, that's good. So I can compile, as long as we're not having a discussion about it, I can compile, I can compile things.
Just one way, the board members should not be putting like all the board members on it, just directly to you, just one-way communication should be fine.
Oh, perfect, okay. It's a good start. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, all right. And if, I always give this final thought just to everyone is that, you know, I am your field service representative, I work with you as a team, but it's also my responsibility to be able to be available to you as individuals if you need guidance or support or sounding board. I do not insert myself in the operations of your district. I want to always work to get you in the place that you feel you can best serve. So however I could do that, any conversations we have, if you reach out to me, are confidential. It undermines trust if I start talking about who I spoke to last. So I hope that in the time that we've spent together, that, you know, you get that sense that I want to be available to you and help you. My whole goal is to see you be really successful at what you're doing for the students of Westfield. Okay?
Well, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out, for spending all this time with us and helping us, you know, get, get focused and ready for the year. So thank you very much.
Of course, it's my, my pleasure and good luck to the, with everyone for the opening of schools. It's an exciting time and I look forward to working with you again.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we should take five. Let's, let's come back in about five minutes and then we'll get through the rest of the meeting. I think everybody needs a little bit of a break, so. So we'll, I'll just take five.
Engineering surveys and programming reviews have been completed, confirming the space requirements at each school. Additionally, over the summer, a $25 million bond anticipation note, which was approved at August 12th special meeting, was successfully sold, yielding a net interest rate of 2.5%, which helped to reduce borrowing costs and provided a premium payment to offset finance, financing expenses. Now moving on to facilities, projects and improvements, the summer is always a period of intense facilities activities and this year is no exception. In addition to the annual scrub down and deep cleaning, our summer work blitz delivered key upgrades throughout the district. Multiple classrooms and offices renewed, received new flooring, fresh paint. And while athletic fields were not getting renewed paint and flooring, they were getting aerating and reseating to improve playing conditions. Cafeteria spaces, as you see in this room this evening, were refreshed with new paint and furniture installations that are, are preparing for our students' arrival here at the high school. We are excited by the opportunities to implement our new schedule and accommodate our students' needs. All second grade classrooms received updated furniture as a continuation of our furniture refresh with, which began last year. And I do want to highlight the importance that everything that we're seeing around is a perfect example of how we have been able to take advantage of the support of our community and being able to allocate resources within the, within
Yes. I'd like to move Items A to Q-Q under the Personnel section of tonight's agenda. Is there a second? Kent, I'll take you. Dr. G, do you have any remarks?
I do. Tonight, we are actually honoring the retirements of two of our employees. Mary McElroy has been a steady and essential presence in the Special Services Department, where her work as a secretary has quietly supported the success of countless students, families, and staff throughout her career. Mary has been a calm, dependable voice, helping to coordinate IEP and annual review meetings with precision and care. She's managed calls, messages, and follow-ups with consistency and compassion, becoming a trusted point of contact all year round. Her colleagues came to rely on her thoroughness, punctuality, and sense of discretion, knowing that with Mary on the task, nothing would be overlooked. Beyond the logistics, Mary approached every interaction, whether with a parent, teacher, student, or even service provider, with kindness, respect, and a positive spirit. Her legacy is one of dependable service, well-run systems, and a deep commitment to students and families. Mary's quiet excellence will be missed, but her impact will continue to be felt throughout the district. Sharon Zuber. Sharon Zuber has been a dedicated paraprofessional at McKinley since 2003, most notably at McKinley Elementary School, where she has supported students and staff as a full-time paraprofessional. Throughout her time at McKinley, Sharon has worked in a variety of roles, serving both as a one-to-one paraprofessional and in self-contained classrooms. No matter the assignment, she has approached her work with dedication, warmth, and an unwavering commitment to helping students thrive. Sharon has a gift for building strong, trusting relationships. Her students know they are seen, supported, and genuinely cared for. That makes all the difference, and that makes all the difference. Beyond the classroom, Sharon is also known for her baking talents, and her homemade treats have brightened many days for her colleagues. Whether offering a helping hand or a sweet surprise, Sharon has always made those around her feel a little more cared for. Her kindness, loyalty, and quiet strength have left a lasting impression on the McKinley community. We'd like to wish Mary and Sharon all the best for a happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you. Can we have a vote?
Rob Bonaccio.
Yes.
Kent Diamonds.
Yes.
Brendan Galligan.
Yes.
Charles Jelineus.
Yes.
Leila Morelli.
Sonal Patel.
Yes.
Kristin Sonic Schmelz.
Yes.
Julie Steinberg.
Yes.
Mary Wickens.
Yes.
Next up is finance facilities. Kent, I'll ask you to move that with what I'm now going to call the Diamond Donations Report, ideally coming in as well.
Very good. Very good. I like it. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to move Items A through T on the financing facilities, and I will highlight some donations. We're starting to hear off great. We have three so far to highlight. First, from the Westfield Soccer Association, a donation of $21,085 to landscape and turf maintenance at the Elm Street Soccer Field. Secondly, the McKinley PTO, $600 to purchase water for the staff room at McKinley. And then the Tamakris PTO donated $871 to purchase a memory bench to honor the late Crossing Guard, Mr. Tom. He was a very nice man. So thank you to all those organizations for their donations. And may I have a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
I thought you were right. I thought you had a question. Kristin.
And then I do want to call out two things in the agenda.
Yeah.
The first is, as Dr. G had mentioned, the appointment of Legacy Construction Management to help us oversee the bond projects as they come to fruition. It's a contract that starts basically the second we approve it and will continue through the last bit of construction, however long that takes us. And the second is federal funding. We did get a slight, well, about the same amount as we got last year, but we anticipated significant cuts, and it works out to about $1.6 million. To the federal level, we anticipated that being about half, if not a little less, and they held us flat. So it helps that the extraordinary aid was offset by other aid.
And just when you look at the months for legacy construction, that's by construction manager. That's why it's 130 months. I looked it up, Brendan. The job is not lasting for 130 months, hopefully.
So the unit is men months. Thank you.
Rob Bonaccio.
Yes.
Kent Diamonds.
Yes.
Brendan Galligan.
Yes.
Charles Jelineus.
Yes.
Leila Morelli.
Sonal Patel.
Yes.
Kristin Sonic Schmelz.
Yes.
Julie Steinberg.
Yes.
Mary Wickens.
Yes.
Kristin, would you move curriculum, instruction, and programs?
Sure. I'd like to move Items A and B under the Curriculum section on tonight's agenda. Can I get a second? Mary? Any questions? Okay, then we can vote.
Rob Bonaccio.
Yes.
Kent Diamonds.
Yes.
Brendan Galligan.
Yes.
Charles Jelineus.
Yes.
Leila Morelli.
Sonal Patel.
Yes.
Kristin Sonic Schmelz.
Yes.
Julie Steinberg.
Yes.
Mary Wickens.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I will call the board's attention to the notes for the record. There was no unfinished or new business submitted for the agenda. Next is liaison reports. I'm not sure that there are any early on, so. Okay, so I'll next move to recognizing the public for comments regarding any matter within the board's jurisdiction. Seeing that no members of the public have come in the span of time between the first public comment, I will, and that is still the case, I will now close the second public comment, and I will request a motion to adjourn. Second for Kent. All in favor? Please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned.